This conference will now be recorded.
Call this meeting in order. Roll call Shannon.
Commissioner Bolt.
Here.
Commissioner Butcher.
Here.
Mayor Trujillo.
Here.
Commissioner Campos.
Here.
Commissioner Gandy.
Here.
Commissioner Campos will lead us in prayer and pledge.
Heavenly Father, we ask that you accompany us tonight, Lord. We come to you, Lord, in a spirit of servitude and gratitude, Lord. We want to thank you, Lord, for hearing our prayers and answering those prayers, Lord. Keeping our community as safe as possible, assuring that our residents are taken care of, Lord, and allowing us to slowly come back into the economic opportunities that we have here, Lord, and we ask that you continue, Lord, to bless us with your presence, guide us in everything that we do, and forgive us for our sins, and always allow us to make the righteous decision, especially for those in most need. And now, if you'll join me and pray unto the Father in the words given to us by our Lord Jesus Christ, Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; that will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those that trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. The Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One republic, where it stands indivisible, liberty, justice for all. I salute the state of New Mexico, here symbol among all.
Thank you, Commissioner Campos. Do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with one item removed, and that would be Resolution 2020-35, award of the lease for the 40 acres of land approximately 1.68 miles west of Highway 18 on Stiled Road, Lovington, Lee County, New Mexico.
Seconding. Had a motion by Commissioner Gandy, seconded by Commissioner Butcher. Roll call Shannon.
Commissioner Gandy.
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt.
Yes.
Mr. Campos.
Yes.
Resolution is removed. Do I have another motion?
I'd like to make a motion for the consideration of minutes from April 27, 2020.
Second. Motion was made by Commissioner Bolt, seconded by Commissioner Gandy.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Before we proceed, could, uh, would I be allowed to make a quick comment on that?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, sir.
On page three of the minutes, under the closed session, we went to closed session this last commission meeting. It does show where you called for a motion, and then I made a motion to close the session. But it doesn't say what time that motion was made. It just says move to closed session at, and there's nothing following that. Regarding the open session, the same thing. When we made a motion to move to open session, there is no time when we made that motion. So it says, it just says closed session at, and then open session at, and it just has a PM, but no time on it. I just wanted to make sure we get that corrected or implemented. James, would you agree?
Uh, yes, sir. What I would recommend is not approving the minutes, and we can just bring them back to the next commission meeting for approval. We'll get that time entered for both the open and closed.
Okay, very good. Also, do you, James, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, do you recommend that the time be listed as what time we adjourned as well at the end of the meeting? Yes or no?
Uh, yes, sir. We can make sure we have all three of those.
Okay, all right. That's all I had.
Thank you, Commissioner Campos. Would you like to amend your motion, Commissioner?
I didn't make the motion.
Yeah, Commissioner Bolt.
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment, the consideration of the minutes from April 27, 2020. Ned.
Do I have a second? Would you like to amend it to state that we do not approve it, right, sir?
That we do not approve it, and at the next meeting, we will take into consideration of the minutes.
Do I have a second on that? Motion was made by Commissioner Bolt, seconded by Commissioner Gandy. Roll call Bolt, Shannon.
Okay, and one correction on that. These are the minutes of May 11th, not April 27th that we're talking about.
That's right. It's May 11, 2020.
Okay. Commissioner Campos.
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt.
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy.
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Moving on to Commissioner and staff report. Wyatt.
Mayor and Commissioners, I have nothing to report at this time.
Does the board have any questions for Wyatt?
Mr. Mayor. Wyatt, how long, remind me how long the project on Commercial Street is supposed to last?
We are, um, it's supposed to end just shy of the opening of the fair. I believe they have 85 working days on that project. Currently, this morning, they did shut down the roadway to start on the culverts, cross or the covert crossing of the roadway. There are three pipes going in, and there's going to be three different sections that they are doing the covert crossings. And after that, they will start on the milling and getting the roadway prepped for all the rest. So as of today, Commercial Street is shut down until the remainder of the project. All right, thank you.
Is there any other questions for Wyatt? Moving on to Gary.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Gary's not in attendance. He actually had previously scheduled annual leave, but he has nothing to report, other than we do have our interim budget for approval tonight on the agenda, so we can actually submit that by the 31st to Department of Finance.
Is there any questions for Gary through James by the board? Okay, moving on to Shannon. Do you have any questions, Shannon?
No, sir. I have nothing to report.
Any questions by the board for Shannon? Commissioner Bolt?
Yes, I have a couple of questions for James. Online payments, the test run you said around May 11th will be making available for June payments online. How's that going?
Well, Mayor, Commissioner Bolt, what we've got is, we ran into an issue that was, had to be resolved by Microsoft, so we received word this morning that that issue has been resolved. They're working on populating the system, so we have not been able to accept online payments yet, but I am hopeful that by the June 10th due date, that we should be able to have that system active. It's just we, I know we've been in contact with ENCODE and Tyler to get the issue resolved, but a lot of it has been working with Microsoft for an unforeseen problem that had to do with the hosted server solution that we have.
Okay, and how are you going to be able to make the residents of Lovington aware of how to be able to sign up online and be able to make payments online?
Oh, we're going to use a combination of the newspaper, as well as social media, and Facebook Live announcement. We'll actually walk, what we plan on doing is during the test is, we'll actually do a screen capture to where we can actually walk folks step by step through it, as far as how they access the link and how they make those payments. So it'll be, it'll be a live demonstration, but at the same time, it'll be recorded so people can actually see it, and we'll actually have tutorials, is the plan right now, tutorials on our website that shows folks how to actually access the online system.
Okay. And the sale of the cheese plant for June 1st, how's that going?
After discussing this with Evelyn over at the EDC, it is still scheduled for June 1st. Right now, the only holdup is the permit from the Department, the New Mexico Department of Agriculture. That has created a little bit of difficulty in getting that closed, just due to what we've been told, people working from home. So I know that we are working with the State Economic Development Department, as well as contacting everyone through the Department of Agriculture to get that permit finalized. From what I understand, there was a phone number that was lacking on the initial submittal. Now, mind you, this permit was submitted way back in April, and about mid, early to mid-May, from what Evelyn was telling me, everything was resubmitted, but we still have not received a response. I know from experience dealing with different state agencies, of course, there's still, a lot of them are doing the remote location working, and this has slowed things down considerably, especially if they require mail-in paperwork and applications. I know that they're typically only sending people to check the mail at the office locations about once a week.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Bolt. Commissioner Bernard?
We're good to go.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. Commissioner Campos?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campos. Commissioner Gandy?
The only thing I had was the food truck or cart or wagon, or whatever that thing is that Main Street has. I did eat there the other day. I enjoyed it, excited to see who else brings what to our community, so that's kind of exciting, and I've enjoyed that. But I don't have anything else.
Thank you, Commissioner. Moving on to Chief Rodriguez.
Nothing new, sir.
Does anybody have anything for Chief Rodriguez? Okay, moving on to Chief Lizardo.
Nothing new to report.
Does the board have any questions for Chief Lizardo? Okay, moving on to City Manager James Williams.
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, one thing we learned at right around 4:30 today by email is, the governor did announce that effective tomorrow, she is going to start to allow outdoor and patio dining at restaurants. So one of the steps that we are taking, we're working with the Chamber of Commerce and Main Street, is we are contacting each one of those restaurants that we have here in town, informing them that they will be able to have somewhat of a dining option to get creative. One thing that we are offering to the public, or these vendors for assistance, is we do have the blue and orange pedestrian gating that we use for our downtown events. We are going to temporarily loan those to those restaurants to help mark off their outdoor patios. I know like everybody else, I can't wait to eat at an actual restaurant, but we're just trying to be of what assistance we can to our local businesses. So hopefully, we'll start to see some activity tomorrow. We have made contact with a couple of them, but we are using those partners located at the Troy Harris Building to make contact with, to help hopefully get some answers pretty quick. Also, just to inform you, Patrick's not able to attend tonight. He did advise he had nothing to report. He's in an area of bad cell reception. The next thing that I did want to cover, I'm going to switch over to a small presentation. As you know, that we had started a facility reopening plan, which began two weeks ago to coincide with the lifting of some of the restrictions that the Public Health Order imposed. We do have different stages identified as far as city facility reopenings. Now, the city facility reopenings, let me share my screen real quick. The city facility reopenings only affect city-run facilities. So the first item, of course, in our reopening plan, and we do these through what we call administrative orders, that just basically direct employees and facilities as far as different precautions and operating procedures that we have. Of course, we do address COVID safe practices such as social distancing, different facility signage. You could see when you walked into City Hall today that we did have limited occupancy. We have hours. We do have markers there for folks to respect social distancing. Hand washing, we have sanitation or sanitizer stations available when the public come into the facilities that we do have open. We are only requiring the use of masks by employees. We're not requiring the public to wear those to enter our facilities. And of course, we do follow all CDC, OSHA, and state guidelines that are out there. Moving along, and I know I provided you all a copy of that earlier, but we do, we do have target dates listed and also occupancies. Now, these target dates and occupancy levels can change due to the Public Health Order, if it's amended or not. These are just targeted goals that we are hopeful that the state will follow. But you can see our Stage Two of the city facility reopening is hopefully a two-week period that starts June 1st. At this particular point, we'll increase the capacity of the library and City Hall. Right now, the library has a occupancy of 20 of the public, but this would obviously increase to 40%, and City Hall, it would be a maximum occupancy of 10. Our operating hours would still stay the same Monday through Thursday. We do close 30 minutes early Monday through Thursday to allow for cleaning, and then on Fridays, we are closed to the public because our staff is doing a modified terminal clean of those facilities. Motor vehicle in Stage Two would still remain at appointment only. Our commission chambers, we would be able to increase that to an occupancy of 17. We'll still continue to do the go-to meetings and virtual meetings of all of our commission, city commission, planning and zoning commission, and other boards would still go through the go-to meeting process. We would, of course, have priority for staff and the board members, commission members, or city commissioners to attend and accommodate public attendance, physical public attendance, if possible. Animal shelter would reopen for appointment only. Our recreational fields, following with the reopening plan that the commission approved back in April, they would be open, but we still wouldn't be able to host organized league play. Moving on to Stage Three, which hopefully would start mid-June, we would increase 75% occupancy of the library and City Hall. Our motor vehicle would still remain at an appointment process, and then, of course, commission chambers, we would still have the virtual meeting option, and, but however, our occupancy load in commission chambers would increase to 32. Recreational fields would still remain open, but no organized league play. Beginning July 1st, hopefully, 100% occupancy of city facilities, with the exception of our senior citizen center, our youth center, and theater. I know that in the reopened Lee County Plan that we presented, that the commission did approve, one thing we had in later phases was the large venues, such as our youth center and theater. With those, in this particular stage, the youth center would open up at 50% occupancy. The theater would open up at 50% occupancy. However, our senior citizen center, that would still remain closed, because that really is dependent upon the New Mexico Aging and Long-Term Services Department allowing us to open. We would still continue our curbside and home delivery options. Also pending, the state of New Mexico, our splash pad would open. Public meetings would resume as normal, and what that would mean is physical attendance, and we would go back to the YouTube livestream. We would not continue any of our meetings via the virtual option through go-to meeting. The last stage that we have, of course, hopefully would begin August 1st. All of our facilities would still remain open, and then we would start to open up for facility rentals and reservations. The only difference is, is due to the COVID safe practices, any deposits that are put down for rentals, and then, for example, on our recreation fields, we, I believe we put in the administrative order that we would retain at least $30 a week, and that is to help provide for the additional chemicals and staff time for disinfection and sanitation of those facilities. But unless the commission can see any particular changes, I know that we haven't issued this yet, because we wanted to receive input from the commission on this, if they had any other ideas or options. But as we did state earlier, this is really dependent upon the Public Health Order and any modifications that they may make. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, James. Is there any questions by the board?
Excuse me.
Okay, nice to have you, Patrick, with us.
Thanks. I was glad you could get called in, so if you've got a question, I'm available.
Okay, sir. We're right now with James, right now, James Williams' report. Does the board have any questions for James Williams in regards to his reports?
Mr. Mayor, one quick question for James. James, can you tell us about the wilderness and the area information there?
No, sir. That would still fall under the gym operation, and those operations are currently still prohibited by the Public Health Order.
So as we stand, there is no projected date to open that up yet, correct?
No, sir. Not that we are aware of. We're hoping, since the current Public Health Order only goes to May 31st, we're hoping to find more information out either tomorrow or Friday, since June 1st is Monday. So we're very, we're really hoping that they will start to allow facilities of those types to start open in some capacity.
All right, thank you.
I have a question, James. At some of the ball fields, I've been made aware that some of the bathroom facilities aren't in working order. Before the fields are open, is everything going to be made good, that it's going to be all working as far as restrooms?
Yes, sir. Definitely. I know that those facilities, the only two facilities that actually have functional restrooms are the Love Street Baseball Field and the Harold Ronald Softball Complex. The Commercial Street Baseball Field does not have restrooms. That's actually part of our ICIP, is to eventually replace those. It's to my knowledge that all of those restrooms are in working order, but I'll verify with our Parks and Recreation Department to make sure that everything is good.
Okay, thank you. It was just brought to my attention. I was just asking, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions by the board? Okay, moving forward. City Attorney Patrick, do you have anything for us?
Uh, no, sir, nothing to report.
Does the board have anything for Patrick? Okay, moving on to public comment. If anybody's tuning in to us, if you would read the following public comment instructions. Okay, moving on to action items. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I consider. Go ahead, Paul.
No, go ahead. I'll second it.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2020-034, approval of 2020 through 2021 interim municipal operating budget.
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Gandy, seconded by Commissioner Campos. Discussion, James?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners. So some of the changes that we made is, on the balance summary sheet, which should be reflected in, right after the cover letter, we did discover that the information that was previously provided to me by the Finance Department was incorrect as far as operating expenses. The numbers that were originally presented to you at our last city commission meeting did not reflect fund balance transfers that needed to occur to bring this current year's operating funds into balance. So what this did was, there is a net effect which reduced our general fund reserve down to 8.33%, which is within the statutory limits. This will require a temporary loan or transfer from enterprise funds to balance that if it's actually needed. Of course, we have seen revenues coming in as projected. We still have the unknown revenues that we'll receive next month with the effects of the pandemic and also the lower oil prices. Moving along, the only other changes that were made to this was, there was a reduction in the FY '21 budget, general fund expenditures by 1,000, I'm sorry, total across all funds of $1,019. We did increase expenditures by a net effect of $60,120. This is, what happened was, we did add a modified uniform budget for our utility and public works department. We will be, we'll be providing them clothing at $200 an employee, which will allow the department to purchase jeans, as well as shirts, with instructions that they are to ensure that they do not launder them at home, just to, instead of using the uniform cleaning service. Also, one thing I would like to also thank Commissioner Bolt for pointing this out in the summary, that we did have a discrepancy on the legislative budget. It showed a pretty good deduction or reduction in the salary and personnel costs. Now, where this came from, we did have to increase that budget by $53,000, because our position budgeting system does not, did or did not include the cost that the city pays for the elective city commissioner healthcare. The reason for that is possession budgeting does not view the city commissioners as employees, so it inadvertently left that out. We also were able to reduce our solid waste 504 fund by $29,400, because we had a position that was inadvertently carried over when the budget was transferred to the interim budget. This will leave us with all of these changes. This will leave the general fund reserve anticipated at 10.47%, which would be a good increase, but I would stand for any questions that the commission has.
Thank you, James. Is there any questions by the board of commissions?
James, go ahead, Paul. Go ahead, Paul.
James, just quickly, what was the reserve projected to be before these changes? Do you remember?
Uh, Mayor, Commissioner Campos, I believe it was that. Uh, Mayor Commissioner Campos, I believe it was at, uh, it was right around 11%. I don't have that actual, uh, you know what, let me pull it up. I believe I have that first draft.
So this is an increase?
No, uh, no, sir. The, uh, original general fund reserve that we had, uh, finishing this current fiscal year is at 9.23%. And so it dropped it, uh, with these changes to 8.3%. Uh, and then what the, uh, one that we submitted, we were going to end, oh, come on, pull it, uh, we were projected to end at 11.73%. Now we're projected to end at 10.47%.
Okay, I'm with you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
James, as far as the health insurance for the city employees, is that remaining the same?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, Mayor, Commissioner Bolt, uh, the insurance share of paying 90% still remains the same. Uh, I did forget to mention that, uh, pending the approval of the interim budget, uh, staff's plan, uh, for moving forward, uh, tomorrow, uh, would be to schedule meetings with each department, uh, individually at a time to review not only their operating budget, but the, uh, potential changes should revenues come in, uh, way below what are budgeted as far as discussing the potential for reductions in the city's amount that contribute towards healthcare as well as furlough days. Uh, so they'll be fully informed of any potential changes that could occur.
Okay. And as far as the, uh, transfers out of the general fund, them were made to balance the budget?
So the transfers out of the general fund, uh, are made to, uh, the, the biggest transfers are actually to either, uh, move money into the debt service fund, uh, for the outstanding bond obligations, but also as supplements for our, uh, uh, our cemetery department. As far as this, the FY21, the transfers out, um, which, uh, I can actually get you a little bit more detail on that, but that's what those are, is to, uh, our youth center as well. Uh, those are to make those funds whole, uh, so they don't go into the negative.
So as far as from, uh, as far as the loans from the Lita Fund and Water Fund, where did them, what do them go towards?
That goes to make the current general fund whole, if needed. And to meet the minimum reserve requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Sir?
Any more questions by the board? There's no further questions. Roll call vote, Shannon.
Mayor Trujillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy? Commissioner Gandy? Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Do we have another motion?
I'd like to make a motion to consider accounts payable.
Second it.
Motion was made by Commissioner Campos, seconded by Commissioner Butcher. Discussion, James?
I would stand for any questions that Commissioner may have. Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor Commissioner Bolt, uh, this is actually for the senior citizens center. The way they package the meals is using what's called Oliver trays, and these are, uh, uh, actually purchasing additional trays for that.
Okay, thank you.
Scotty, turn on your Mac, uh, turn on your mic, Commissioner.
For whatever reason, me and the button don't get along today. Uh, Pipestone Equipment?
Uh, yes, sir. Mayor Commissioner Gandy, uh, Pipestone Equipment was actually the purchase of what they call an altimeter valve, uh, for the Polk Street Water Tower. Uh, that's actually tied to another one, uh, J29 Enterprises, that's the contractor that actually installed, uh, the equipment. Uh, that was part of a capital outlay appropriation to close out that grant. So we would, we are being reimbursed at full amount.
All right, thank you.
James, uh, talking about funding, uh, have we received anything from the, uh, for the new magistrate court through New Mexico?
Mayor Commissioners, uh, the only thing that we received, uh, is a $300,000 distribution, uh, from the NMFA proceeds, uh, to repay us for the property purchase. Uh, I did not log in today to see, uh, if we've received the $150,000 one-time payment, uh, from the Administrative Office of the Courts. Uh, I did, uh, send an email off to our, uh, new facilities manager, uh, who, uh, took over for Luis Campos. Uh, Luis has left, uh, and moved to Las Cruces. Uh, they turned the project over to this other individual, Scott, uh, cannot for the life of me remember his last name. Well, on May 14th, we actually sent an email wanting an updated timetable, uh, as to construction demo. Uh, we didn't receive anything. We did send off another email inquiry today, uh, and I specifically requested an update prior to this meeting tonight. Uh, tomorrow, the plan is, is to contact him or potentially his immediate supervisor, uh, to get an update on that.
Are there any other questions by the Board of Commission?
Yeah, I got a question, James. LeCo Internet?
Uh, yes, sir. I know that's an unusually high amount. That's actually two work, two months worth of bill. Uh, there was a, there was an invoice sent in late after the last payment cycle, so that LeCo Internet covers, uh, our phone service as well as internet connections. Uh, and then the LeCo, the separate LeCo Internet charge, uh, is actually for the library service. Uh, they are actually, uh, paid separately, so that bill is, uh, paid with a separate payment.
Okay, yeah, I didn't notice one on our last, right, uh, report here, so that's why I'm asking, because it seemed a substantial amount. Thank you.
Is there any other questions by the board? There's no further questions. Uh, roll call votes, Shannon.
Mayor Trujillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Accounts payables have been approved. Do we have a final motion?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Campos, seconded by Commissioner Gandy. Roll call vote, Shannon.
Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolt?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.